I call to order the meeting tonight of the Town Council here on Monday, October 3, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the McKinnon Council Chambers. Relative to Mass General law chapter 30A, section 20F, and for the benefit of the public, this meeting is being recorded by both video and audio methods. Item number one is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, roll call. Counselor Adams excused. Counselor Daniel present. Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Lozlo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Rivas.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Counselor Steves is excused owing to a last-minute emergency. We have seven, I believe, seven present for form. Item number three, consider and accept the Town Council meeting minutes of Monday, September 26, 2022. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get those meeting minutes in time. I'd like a motion to postpone that to the next meeting.
So moved.
Second. Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number four, consider and accept the Town Council of the whole meeting minutes, Monday, August 29, 2022. So moved.
Second.
Any deletions, corrections, additions, other amendments? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Subcommittee reports. A would be general government. Counselor Steves is unable to make it. We'll move on to Department of Public Works. Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had no meetings, but I will be scheduling a meeting for next week. Thank you.
Very good. Education and Human Services, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. We had an Education and Human Services Subcommittee meeting right before the Town Council meeting tonight at 6:00. We have two of the agenda items on, we considered two of the items on tonight's agenda, and I'll discuss more at the items when we get to them. They are items 11 and 12.
Very good. Planning and Development, Counselor Adams is absent. We'll move on to Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Lozlo.
Mr. Chairman, through you. We did have a meeting, and we have agenda items coming up that we will have recommendations from Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, Chairman's announcements. I have no announcements for this evening. Item number seven, Town Manager's announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Council, those watching at home and here in the chambers. I just want to remind everybody that the Board of Health will be holding its Bootify Southbridge, which is to beautify Southbridge, the fall cleanup, which is going to be this Saturday from 8:30 to noon, meeting here at the Town Hall. The rain date would be the next day, Sunday the 9th, and costumes are welcome. Based on a question in Council's form about the carpet, I just want to remind folks, I did look into the carpet issue before due to supply chain issues. They are on back order, but I've been assured again that the contractor is expecting them in this month and will come in on the weekend to install them. I know Counselor Marquetti did ask me over the weekend about a drone issue over an EMS situation. I did check in with our police and fire, and it was not one of the town's drones. At this point, we're not sure who it was. I know some of the officers unseen at that incident were, you know, had indicated that the drone was there. I don't think they were pleased with it. I'm not sure how we could track a third-party drone. I just did a little research yesterday afternoon, and you can get a drone as cheap as about $47 shipped to your house within two days from Amazon, and there's no requirements. I think it was suggested for ages 14 and up. So, you know, it's more likely a third-party drone, and I'm not sure. I'll work it out further with both chiefs, how we could regulate it. But I know we're still working on the training to get the registration for the fire department as well as the policy issues. So I just want to make people aware that it was not a town of Southbridge drone that was there. This morning, I attended the opening of the Bridge Fridge at RMG Renaissance Medical Group with Counselor Adams. We met with numerous representatives there. There were two women who really kicked this off, Carla and Yamina. They put this together, and it is now a fridge that's supported by the community and also by RMG. It's on their property. There was a lot of stakeholders, including the YMCA, Community Connection Center of Hope, Harrington Memorial Hospital there to support it, and that will be to help with food insecurity within the community. Anybody can donate to that or be there, and anybody in need can go down to RMG in Sandersville and take from it. I did participate with the Fire Chief at the Fire Chiefs Association Legislative Breakfast last week, where we met a lot of legislators from the area. We had good conversation, including with Senator Ryan Fatman, about issues affecting Southbridge and the fire service community. And also last week, I did attend at the Harvard Kennedy School, an initiative with the Baker-Polito administration. Both the governor and lieutenant governor were there, was dealing with their approach to strengthening local government through collaboration. And I just want to mention that the Baker-Polito administration has been very helpful in our efforts to get additional monies for the rail trail with some of our other grants, as well as Senator Fatman and Representative Durant. So we've had a good relationship with these individuals, why I think it's important for me and certain department heads to attend these events, to maintain those relationships, and that is all I have this evening.
Very good. Thank you. Item number eight, presentations. We have no presentations scheduled for this evening. Item number nine, Citizens' Forum.
Wait, wait. Peg.
It does look like the presentation is on the agenda if you choose to.
Allow it this evening?
Would you like?
It's on my agenda.
I don't know. I just saw it here.
Very good.
It is the agenda that is posted online, too, has the presentation. Yes.
All right, then. I stand corrected. Very good, Peg.
So I'd like to take a moment to recognize some of the activities happening here in Southbridge. There are a lot of good things, thanks to current and past leadership and administration. It's all thanks to the talent and the hard work of the many, many volunteers who have served and continue to serve the town of Southbridge. So I would like to start by showcasing just a list of achievements that we had provided to investors who'd come to town as a quick summary. And I have the stopwatch on for five minutes. So, we adopted a flex overlay district for the American Optical Complex and the Globe Village Mill area, creating conditions for mixed-use development, repurposing abandoned manufacturing buildings, manufacturing buildings into live-workplace spaces. The town of Southbridge Airport runway upgrades were completed in 2022, thanks to the FAA or the Federal Aviation Administration, valuing $7 million. You can go to YouTube to find the ribbon-cutting ceremony. The repaving and resignalization of downtown Main Streets, almost complete, thanks to the Department of Housing and Community Development, American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds, and the town of Southbridge totaling $3.58 million, which included the installation of six-inch and eight-inch fire service lines along Main Street for economic development, to ensure these properties aren't prevented from bringing buildings up to code for fire suppression due to the five-year moratorium after paving, value $140,000. Department of Transportation, or DOT, TIP project, the Transportation Improvement Program, Project 608778, that's scheduled to reconfigure Hook Street, La Rochelle Way, Foster Street, and Hamilton Street into a rotary in 2024 using federal and state and Department of, excuse me, federal and state Department of Transportation funds, whose value is 5.8 million. You can go to the following link to see this project. We've lured back, excuse me, the town has lured back the Registry of Motor Vehicles for a 10-year contract at the town's Train Depot location, thanks to your investments in the HVAC system, value $50,000. You've secured the United States Department of Agriculture funding to offset the cost of town of Southbridge capital items, DPW, police ambulance vehicles, value $230,000. Capilla Park, McCann Fields for new handball courts, ADA path, skate park, path lighting, security, ball field upgrades. That'll begin this fall 2022, thanks to the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and the Department of Housing and Community Development, value $650,000. Big one, the state recently approved our Home Rule legislation to allow for seven new liquor licenses, four of which will be for the downtown. Developing of the Quinnipiac Valley Rail Trail from Dudley to Stirbridge. You can find the press release by going to the link at the bottom, to be completed between '22 and '24, thanks to the Department of Commerce, Mass Trails, Mass Department of Transportation, and the town of Southbridge, valued $4.1 million. $2.6 million from EDA, and the remainder is state and local funds. We've hired Mark Karen for a one-year commitment to act as our redevelopment authority executive director during, using American Rescue Act plan funds to focus on revitalization in the downtown. Our municipal vulnerability preparedness planning exercise was completed in 2022, which will help ensure climate resiliency in the downtown. The West Street construction is beginning this fall 2022, thanks to the Department of Housing and Community Development and the town of Southbridge, value $3.1 million. Oops. South Street construction to replace water main, drainage, and road construction will be completed in 2023, value $3.8 million. River Street and Crane Street, water sewage, drainage, roads, sidewalks reconstruction, all to be completed in 2023, values to be determined. Ongoing fire station development to be located near the McCann Fields with an over $25 million debt exclusion approved by the town in 2021. Quinn-Sigman Community College's Southbridge campus at the Middle High School is now offering free certificate programs to area residents. Southbridge Hotel and Conference Center secured a three-year contract with Massachusetts Police Training Committee, or MPTC, to use space for statewide training. New business, Arrow Aggregates slated to open up a new glass upcycling processing facility. New private housing development, Wells Ribbon Cutting, summer of 2022, go-to historic. You can find the news splash of it at the following link. New private development housing, new private housing development at 5 to 15K Street to redevelop a mill building with 48 new apartments within the old American Optical Complex, completed in 2020, initially anticipated to be 2023, but at this rate, we're seeing it may open up in 2022. You can find the link for more details at the following link there. New private housing development, 25K Street project to redevelop another mill building with 126 new apartments within the old American Optical Complex, completed in 2023. To all involved in these accomplishments, thank you. This work is making a difference. Thank you for your time. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you first, to Peg, first, though, thank you. This is because of the work you led in the office you hold. I really, no, you don't take enough credit, and you really should take some of this credit. You have been working on the ground, fighting for these grants, seeing any opportunity we can get to help in the economic development of Southbridge, and you and your team have been phenomenal. Without you, this would not have gotten done. So I personally thank you. It's been a pleasure to work with you on this, and it's so nice to see all this economic developments, hear all these numbers of state and federal monies coming in to support our economic development. It's always a good story to tell, so thank you.
Thank you. I just want to credit the prior director for the efforts that were made to get the Wells School, the K Street projects through the town with the prior town councils. Those lifts are tremendous. Those tails are very long. You're finally seeing that development five years later. That's no credit to me or to the people in my office right now. However, yes, we are trying to take whatever we can currently and run with it to try to build on the momentum that's been happening.
Counselor Lozlo.
I have always been a council that looks at where we were, where we are, and where are we headed. It wasn't too long ago, when I first got on the council on a second tour, we had a parking lot in distress, a Wells project that was stalled, a registry building that was not coming back, and various other issues going on in the town of Southbridge. I remember the days where we would ask a very simple question about the parking lot or any of the grants or any of the things going on, and we could not get a straight answer. There were a few times when you were the number-two person, you would come up and answer the questions. That was the first time I got to see you in action, knowing that there was somebody that had the answers, and it was always you. Now, you at the helm, and I know nobody does anything by themselves. It's all a team concept. We have a town manager that's instrumental in so many different crossroads of these things I'm mentioning, counselors before, during, and after, because some things happen when counselors are here, and they're not here when they're completed. And so there's plenty of kudos to go around. But tonight, I just want to say thank you to you personally, because I know where we were, I know where we are, and I feel real good about where we're headed, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. If any of you know me, be careful, I cry easily.
Thank you very much, Peg.
You're welcome.
I appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. Item number nine, Citizens' Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to approach the podium to speak on an issue not on tonight's agenda?
Just to start, I want to address this to the town manager. This is the third Citizens' Forum. I'm asking the question, under what authority can the town mandate to a resident who can interact with their dog?
So, as I've explained to you in the past, this gentleman received a ticket. You're allowed to appeal your ticket. He asked for a hearing. He got his hearing. It's not, just like our parking tickets, they're not public meetings. I don't know who he told to attend. He told, obviously, third parties, because there were some there. He had his hearing. He wanted to work out getting his ticket back and his dog back. And as I said, for the reasons previously stated, I said to him it would be in his best interest if he wants his dog back, and he wanted the fines suspended, that I was going to place some conditions, and they were also at the advice and counsel of the ACO, who was there, and so that is how I made it. And I am a municipal hearing officer, so when there is a municipal ticket issued and people do not want to pay it, they either come to, we have various hearing officers that hear things, and usually when they're more serious, they get handed over to the manager to hear them.
All right. I don't have, I only have five minutes, but you stipulated to him that the dog can't interact with me. Stipulate on the license. What law does that, back that up?
So you have a lot of latitude in these particular instances. If he wanted to pay the fine and pay the full kennel fees, he could have done that. But as I previously indicated, Mr. Solinsky, your name was on that rabies vaccination, your name were on those veterinarian reports. Something was going on there, and the reason that dog was taken, because he was unlicensed in your possession. So I said to Mr. Christian, if you're going to take the dog back, I would suggest it is in your best interest that you not let Mr. Solinsky take the dog. And he said he was okay with that, and I made it a condition of the ticket. And that's all there is to say. I'm not going to comment any further, Mr. Solinsky.
Clearly, there's no authority or law stating that you can mandate to a citizen. You just said that yourself. There's leeway. So I need to reclaim my five minutes. And since I lost my dog Vegas, I have been slipping backwards now, 90% of my time spent in my house. When I had Vegas and later started working with Rocco exercising Mr. Christian's dog, I would be out several times a day, every day, and felt so much joy in seeing how these dogs love to be outside enjoying life. I would like to contribute to my community through caring for dogs, by bringing them to the vets, by walking them, by training them, by taking the groomers, that a lot of residents don't have the time or the money to be able to do that. So again, I asked the town board and the manager to support in this endeavor by raising their hands. I'm not saying to mandate. You're not mandating that I have to do this, but you're just saying you won't arrest the dog if I'm walking somebody's dog. I don't know what reason you choose not to take the opportunity to help the community. And I'm prepared to wait until hell freezes over, until I get some answers for this. But I want to address, at the second to the last meeting, you said such a thing as constructive possession, right? And you said that was the smirk of a Philadelphia lawyer. Well, I have no legal training, but I do have common sense. And common sense says I wasn't challenging possession. I had the dog right on my leash. I obviously had possession of Rocco. What I was challenging was ownership. And ownership is formed by a contract between two parties, the town and Mr. Christians. They signed an agreement, a license. That's a contract. So I don't know where you get constructive possession, because I never challenged a possession. So whoever gave you that legal advice ought to go back to first-year law school.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to approach the podium to speak on an issue tonight that's not on tonight's agenda? Very good. Seeing none.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I'd like to vote to suspend the rules and add item 9A, vote to accept the warrant for the state election scheduled for November 8, 2022, please.
Second. Very good. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Very good. The motion is vote to accept the warrant for the state election scheduled for November 8, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. We have a warrant for the coming election. Madam Clerk, are you all set?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Item number 10, vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Michael Como as the sealer of weights and measures. Inspector effective immediately.
So moved. Second.
Second. Counselor Lozlo.
Reclamation at Subcommittee was unanimous for confirmation.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 11, vote to approve the Recreation Department transfer request of $549.99 from account number 001631-511700, salaries part-time, to account number 001631-542000, office supplies to purchase a printer and authorize the town manager to sign any related documents.
So moved. Second.
Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. This was recommended by the Education and Human Services Subcommittee by a 5 to 0 vote.
Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 12, vote to approve applying for technical assistance regarding the Pay as You Throw, PAYT, program as part of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, Mass DEP, Sustainable Materials Recovery Program grant, and authorize the town manager to sign any related documents.
So moved.
Second. Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. This was recommended 5-0 by the Subcommittee.
Yes, Mr. Chair. This was born out of the conversation that we had at the Board of Health meeting. As you may recall, Ms. Irene Condon of the DEP came in to talk about Pay as You Throw. At that time, she did talk about this Sustainable Materials Recovery Grant program, that we could get up to 80 hours of assistance to help us look at program planning, look at comparable communities, and program implementation of a Pay as You Throw program here in Southbridge. So speaking with Ms. Smith, we feel this would be a worthwhile endeavor for the town to get additional information as it tries to make its, the council tries to make its decision relative to how we're proceeding in the coming months with regard to curbside collection.
Counselor? Thank you. Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I've been looking at this Pay as You Throw system that communities use throughout Massachusetts, and I've tried to do an analysis of what it's going to cost us for curbside pickup and what the taxes would be. The Health Department estimated that it would be $1.8 million for curbside. Town manager has estimated a 7.5% increase in our taxes. A lot of residents do not want to see that type of tax increase. They also feel it would be unfair for a single family to be paying the same or more for three or four families. I looked at the town manager's taxes increase. I thought it was a little high, but let's, just going by that, the issue is how are we going to pay for it, the curbside? Are we going to pay for it through our taxes, or are we going to institute some sort of Pay as You Throw? Most communities, they use a system that pay for bags, stickers, or bins. Bags can cost anywhere from a dollar for a small bag to $2 for large bags. Alternately, there could be a charge per bin, and I presume the cost would be per volume or weight of trash at curbside. I would also presume recycling would be either free or not very, not cost very much, because there is a return on recycling. If there's not, if it does cost something, then that would cost extra. But just looking at the Pay as You Throw per bags, residents, if there's 7,000 residents, which is what the contract is now, residents would have to pay about 312 per year for bags. That's just going through the numbers. $2 a bag, three bags per week. And anything less than that, I don't see how that that would cover this. But there are a lot of questions that I would like to ask Ms. Condon about this Pay as You Throw, and so I'm glad that we're going to apply for this grant, get her here to explain how this would work. How would you charge per bin? What would the cost for the bins? You could, you could do it by a utility charge as well. You could combine the two of them. I know not all residents have the means to dispose of their trash any other way but through a curbside, so the question is, how are we going to pay for it? So I do have a lot of questions, and I'm looking forward to having her come here and discuss them with us. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Rivas.
Through you. I think as we heard in one of our last meetings, our residents want us to find ways that can offset the burden, you know, on their taxes, and I think, you know, because this is a grant, it is an opportunity to explore something that, even if it's a small amount, will help our residents not have to pay an increase, you know, an exorbitant amount increase in taxes. So I do think that it is a great idea to explore this and get the technical assistance. I do also have a lot of questions. Thank you.
Hearing nothing? All those in favor? Opposed? Item number 13, vote to accept the Park Lane acquisitions and renovations for communities parked grant to acquire 76 Central Street and construct a pocket park to be reimbursed up to $175,000 or 70% of the project total, and authorize the town manager to sign any related documents.
So moved. Second.
Very good. That's Counselor Adams, committee.
That was vote 3-0 in favor to come up to the Town Council at the meeting.
Thank you very much, Counselor Dow. I appreciate that. Ms. Dean? Thank you.
For those of you who didn't see the Subcommittee meeting, this was originally the Land Water Conservation Fund grant that the grant administrator suggested we move to a park grant, because the fund's timeline is more reliable and the reimbursement rate is higher for the town, so it's a more advantageous position for us. So you approved the Land Water Conservation Fund, you approved the park grant application, and so here we are, asking for you to please accept the award at this time.
Discussion? Discussion? Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. So this is a park that's going to be built on 0.06 acre of land, which is assessed at $61,000, and it's going to cost $250,000. The question that I have now is, the funding from the town is coming from a CDBG miscellaneous account, and I was questioning, how did $100,000 end up in a miscellaneous account? I might understand $10,000 in a miscellaneous account, but 100,000 seems a lot. I have asked in the past that some CDB funds be made available on sidewalks, on parks that we have right now, even on the community center. Some of the answers I've gotten in the past is that there is no money available, the funds have already been dedicated to one project or another. But now it's revealed that there is over 100,000 in a miscellaneous account that could have been used on some of these items that I had asked for. I also received an email saying, I got two emails on my request for this, the total in the miscellaneous account. One saying that I was going to have to pay to get this information, and then the next email, I got the information. So I don't know when this started that we, councilors have to start paying for information, but I've never known that to be the case in the past. When councilors ask questions, they get an answer on it without having to pay out of pocket. Anyways, I just think two things, $250,000 for a 0.06 park is a little high, and I just question how so much money got set aside into a miscellaneous account. But that's all my concerns are. Thank you.
Ms. Dean.
I'm a little, almost exhausted hearing all those questions packed into one. There's probably about eight different things I'd want to address there. One, the $250,000 is part of what the urban renewal plan outlined, which was approved back between 2007, 2011, for the redevelopment authority to be able to create a more economically developed downtown, a more vibrant revitalized downtown. That pocket park is crucial to, you've got the $5 million tip grant, or tip project to change the Hook La Rochelle Way into a rotary and the adjacent rail trail for $4 million. You have $9 million worth of development, and you had some designers, consultants that were hired to say, these are the most strategic locations for the abutting parks, trailheads, et cetera. And so this location was part of that large plan. This has been documented since then. The property owners have been made aware since then. And the amount that was raised for this project is an up to $250,000. We're hoping it will come in for less, but we won't know until we get moving on it. Therefore, we asked for the grant to be for enough amount, or enough funds, so that we don't have to come back to the town. With regards to the miscellaneous funds, that's a, might be a misnomer when it comes to miscellaneous. It's always been called the Program Income and Miscellaneous, CDBG Program Income and Miscellaneous Income Account, within which is any housing rehab funding that comes back to the town. We created, through the CDBG program, housing rehab projects, which we're hearing a lot of interest in for future, potentially for the next round of CDBG. Those housing rehab projects have terms within their agreements that state, we lean the property. Should the house be transferred to someone outside of the family and sold, that the money comes back to the town. In the case of the last three years housing boom, we've seen houses turnover and personal decisions made that it's worth it to either maybe refi when the mortgage interest rates were much lower, or sell to be able to make on, you know, as housing prices were really at their best in the area, or at least better than they'd been in a while. Those funds come back to the town. I understand someone who's interested in capital and who's been a big advocate for capital committee and funds for those capital projects, it's probably very hard to see that money, you know, designated as miscellaneous, but not to misunderstand, it is really, it is CDBG funds that are owned by the town. You can choose to use it how you wish, but what I've seen is that the funds have been sitting there and we, there was discussion about maybe giving it to the redevelopment authority for seed money, or coming to the town council to ask whether you'd be interested in giving it to them for seed money, or keeping it in the vein of direct economic development towards their efforts. And then with regards to, I don't know, oh, the FOIA. And so the Freedom of Information Act software that the town is using helps the town to be able to track a records request. We are by law required, the state of Massachusetts did poorly when it was examined on its sunshine laws, related, relative to other states. And so they, there was an effort to improve the public records request process and our open meeting laws to make us a more transparent state. Part of that is we have these records access officers in the town that are required to respond to records requests in 10 days. If not, we get, you know, there's, so there's all these stipulations within the law. How towns choose to handle it is up to them. This town smartly chose to create a software that helps track the request when it comes in, and then we, if there are other departments that are responsible also, we can, we can assign the request to other people. And if it's, if it's X amount of time, its value has a certain dollar amount. And so all requests that come in, I'm trying to track them as efficiently as possible. So when I get a request, whether it's in a Subcommittee meeting and it's something I don't have on hand, or whether it's through an email, I will start that records request through the system going forward. And the reason you received two emails is because the town needs to notify someone that, you know, we received your records request, and there may be a fee, and then the second is the more detailed response. Hopefully, you know, in the case of something that's a little more simple, straightforward, there wouldn't be a fee because it wouldn't take us a lot of time.
All right. Thank you. I mean, I just simply asked the question, how much do we have in the account? Next thing I know, I'm getting, you have to pay for this records request. It's never happened before on the town council, so I was just taken aback by it. Thank you.
Counselor Montigny.
Thank you very much. First, this was brought up in the spring for the price of 207,000, and it got voted down by the last council, which this seems like a good thing because now we're getting up to, you know, $175,000 supplemented from it. So it's costing us much less now, and I will support it tonight. To the previous speaker's concern about the paying for records requests, I don't believe it is a records request when you are on the town council, you're running the town for free. You know, I don't think that we should be paying for information. We don't get paid at all to be up here. So, thank you.
Counselor Lozlo.
In reference, in reference to records request or requests or data, I know this has been challenged. I know it was talked about to Secretary of State's office, and this happens, there was a big bruja about, I want to say about 11 years ago, maybe 12. And what came out of it was, if a citizen came in, believe it or not, they would have to pay for the data requested. If an elected official requested it, they didn't have to pay for it. So if we have to do a little homework to find out if it's changed, maybe everybody has to pay for it now, we could look into it. But I was under the impression that an elected official makes the decisions on all of these projects and all of these things that we're working on, that they should have all the data they need. As frivolous as some of it may be, it's needed. Thanks.
Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify, because I'm just a little confused myself. You use this software to track the request, not to actually exact the fee out of the request, correct?
Supplemental to the software is this feature that logs the time it took, should you enter the time, and it generates the fee right there for the individual to then pay.
So it's not just logging the interaction, you're also assessing a fee every time?
It's a one-stop shop. It's very efficient. And so in an effort to be as comprehensive as possible, I guess I didn't discriminate between town council and others. I just am treating all requests the same. If they're coming in, I'm logging it into this records request system.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that's going to broach a further discussion down the road, and we'll, we'll see about that. This isn't the time to discuss that, but we will. Okay. Very good. Anyone else? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? One against? Motion passes. Item number 14. Vote to approve applying for the Community Compact CCIT grant for up to $143,360 to provide e-permitting software townwide, and authorize the town manager to sign any related documents.
So moved.
Second. Counselor Dow, do you remember? Is this 3-0?
Yeah. No, the 14, I don't think it was the, was the 15.
Okay.
I don't think that was on PND.
That's what I have.
That's David? That's David, too?
That's what I have.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, 13, 14, 15, okay, yeah.
Very good. Ms. Dean.
So again, just a cog in the wheel here, down in economic development, this was something that was brought up through many different departments, is something that could be used in the town. I saw a funding opportunity because, since being in the department prior to supervising, I'd heard Eric and the prior inspections interest in it, but they could not find funding. And so now this is the first time I'm in a position where I see funds and I can come advocate for them, because I personally, from an economic development planning perspective, do see the benefit of this. I think it will serve our customers. I think it will serve our business community. I think it will help us to be viewed as more business-friendly. I think it will help us to be more efficient with our code enforcement. I think it will help clean up the town. And the funds that we're asking for, the $143,000, is a, the number, should we go forward with this particular vendor with all of the different departments? If we're awarded at that time, we would do a more exacting exercise of maybe demoing a couple other softwares and finding out if all departments are interested, or if there are fewer departments that are interested. And then we would also be at that time asking for the funding to support the annual subscription.
Very good. Any discussion? Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. This was discussed at the Planning and Development. It looks like this is $143,360 for the software, and it's a grant. I'm in favor of grants. But then there will be a yearly subscription that will come from the taxpayers. I think it was between 70 and 75,000. Wasn't really clear to me which one, but there would be a yearly subscription, and I'm just wondering if the councilors think that that's a good idea to have to pay for this subscription every year for this grant. I know that something like this, it's not something that I would use. When I pay my bills, I write a check, come down to the town hall, and I pay it. And I don't know of a lot of residents that would use this. I know that there, sometimes there are fees for using this software. I think the town manager was going to look into what the fees and added costs are, and if he'd like to respond to that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Our interim treasurer, if I could, at the moment is currently out, and so I cannot get an answer on the banking. So I know that was a question. I think it would really depend, the annual fee, on who we go for a vendor. We did e-permitting in my last community, and the number was significantly lower than the 70,000. It is negotiable, and it may depend upon the vendor that we ultimately get. I know that Economic Development has spoken to more than one. I participated in one of the calls. So a lot of communities have moved to this. There's a lot of people that look to do more things online. We did have during that conversation the fact that you could have a hybrid model going forward. At some point, there are people that are more inclined to do things over their phone for convenience or through the internet. Yes, there are a lot of people that still like to use the, as often referred to, brick and mortar, where they walk in and they pay, but I think over time, you will see a shift. So it's something that, you know, I do think it's worth looking into, but I can follow up when our treasurer comes back or in an email about whether or not we could get fees. But I believe it has more to do with the bank that we use for our electronic transactions than it does the actual vendor, and I believe there are fees currently on some of the online options that we have. So I will research that when they get back.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Rivas.
I do think the benefit in two different ways. And when Ms. Dean spoke about creating a more business-friendly environment in our community, which is crucial. If we want to, in the future, offset the burden on our residents and our tax base, kind of shifting that burden more towards businesses, this is a crucial piece of that puzzle towards the future, and I think that this is what we want to do, to help our community. Also, I mean, I do write checks as well, but for me, you know, for a lot of working people, it is more convenient to be able to pay online and to, if that can streamline those processes, that would be a lot more convenient for a lot of residents as well.
Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I have to, actually have to agree with the previous speaker. Making services available online would streamline the process. As somebody who just last week had to go to Worcester to physically go get my birth certificate, I felt that it would have been so much easier if there was more online systems that took different forms of payment, and I think it would make it easier for the average taxpayer to actually be able to pay their fees, pay their bills, pay their excise tax, whatever, in a more streamlined way and make it more friendly. It's the way of the future. It's the way my generation's looking at things. Everything's done. I can do everything from this phone right here. So I think it's smart of us to be embracing the way of the future, especially as the generations are changing.
Thank you. Any further? Hearing none? All those in favor? Opposed? One against? The motion passes. Item number 15. Vote to approve applying for the Green Communities Competitive Grant for up to $200,000 for energy upgrades at the DPW, the Middle High School, and West Street School, and authorize the town manager to sign any related documents.
So moved.
Second. That was vote 3-0 in favor to recommend to the town council.
Very good. Ms. Dean.
The town became a green community back in 2017, and you were given your initial chunk of funds to spend, which you did, along with some other, what they call on-bill savings projects throughout the town. At this point, we'd like to go for our first competitive grant for up to $200,000. We're working with the same energy expediter we were working with for the first chunk of money, and I have gotten recommendations from them of projects that could add up to $200,000. I apologize. I asked the Energy Expediter to send us a more detailed list of projects and/or to be present at the meeting. He wasn't able to attend tonight, but he did get us an email this afternoon, which I fired off to you probably close to 4 o'clock. If you had a chance to look it over, it talked specifically, I think this is what we all wanted, it talked specifically about what are those weatherization projects at the DPW? What is the air source heat pump at the DPW? Is it upstairs, downstairs, et cetera? So we all saw that it was the upstairs. They would be, they would be replacing the upstairs DPW air source heat pump for them to have better heat up there, that the West Street, it sounds like it's just old, needs to be replaced. So you have the option of those two projects. And the lighting seems like the one that came up in each one is the, is the obvious that we should go for. The middle high school lighting, we did a small partial project with the initial grant funds, the initial Green Communities, for less than $10,000, and this would now complete that project. I know we say it's a new school, but we should remember that it's 10 years old now, and that these, and we do hear comments about the lighting at the school, and so this would be a benefit to them. And what we heard from the Subcommittee meeting was a mix between projects one and two of the Subcommittee and the councilors sitting in the, in the meeting. There were three that voted for, informally voted for, the second one, the middle high school lighting in the West Street, and there were two that voted for the first one, the DPW air source heat pump, the lighting and the DPW weatherization. So the motion, I left all three projects in the motion, and then would just suggest that it and then would just suggest that if you don't include the West Street, that you just omit that from the motion. And then we would go forward with the application through CMRPC, our local regional planning agency. They'll help us prepare it and get it out. The Energy Expediter works up the savings. And then we go forward with the project over the next year and then we can apply for another. Next time, I would still, I'd like to really have this to be a more robust conversation. We can get a little more dreamy-eyed about what some energy savings projects might be that are outside of familiar zones. That might be a fun exercise for everybody, but for now, these are just easy, straightforward, low-lying fruit.
Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I did take a look at the Green Communities Project summaries on the state's website. And I compared it to some of the needs, our capital needs in town. I saw what other communities were spending that money on. I compared it to what our school committee is looking for. Some of the needs that the school is on their capital list for this year for FY23. They were looking for window replacements at the elementary schools for about $125,000. A door repair at West Street. Weather stripping at the middle high school. Exterior envelope work at the three-grade schools. Replace a boiler pump at Southbridge Middle High School. A rooftop unit at the old high school. A lot of, and those were all things that other communities were also spending these Green Community Grant Funds on. Other items on some of these other communities were spending the funds on were solar units on public buildings, which I thought was a good idea. Something called an idle right technology, which reduces the amount of time that our public vehicles are idling. And the benefits to that is it saves fuel, reduces pollution, reduces noise, gas emissions, and engine wear. So, all of these things that I listed here were in the capital planning for the school department. I didn't see anything in their capital planning for lighting at the middle high school or the West Street air source pump. I did not see that in their list. I was at the DPW facility last week and I did discuss the air source pump and they weren't even aware that there was a problem with them. I'm not opposed to the grant, don't get me wrong. I agree that we should stick to number two. But I don't, I just like to say, I don't see that the lighting or the air source pump was even on their list to be done for FY23. If you're going to do the grant, then I would suggest we stick with number two, as it is in the agenda. The, but I, like I said, I don't have any problem with the grant. Would like to see it used on things that they actually want. I don't know where this list came from. But if you want to do the 200,000, then I would say we stick with number two. Thank you.
Counselor Chair.
Certainly.
Just to give a little context on the projects. The Energy Expediter's initial role with the town is to do an energy assessment of our buildings. So they came up with some items from that. The lighting is also one of these standard, low-lying fruit items that they are oftentimes looking to do. So although this may not have been on the 2017 energy assessment, it's probably something that they asked whether, you know, or looked into whether was needed over the last two years.
Anyone else?
So the agenda tonight is to vote on number two, that's the way I read the agenda, correct?
Yep.
Thank you.
Everyone clear on that? Okay, no further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Choice number two.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Item number sixteen. Vote to accept the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency MEMA grant. Funding is capped at $50,000 per project for emergency backup generator power for shelters at the senior center building to provide electric power to support emergency shelter operations and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Lazo.
The recommendation from subcommittee was unanimous of all present to pass.
Any discussion? Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I did take a look, I got the email today on the generator, Kohler Generator, and I did take a look at it online. And I have to say, that's a very large generator. Nine feet by four feet by five feet high. And that's going to go on the side of the building next to those residential properties, is that correct?
So that's actually going to go on the, for those who may not know me, I'm TJ Edwards, I'm the Emergency Preparedness Liaison for the Fire Department. I don't come over here too often, so I kind of stay under the radar. If you come around the back of the building, currently the generator is against the building. This is actually going to go on the other side of the road, right there, that little driveway. So it's going to go right on the backside of the fence. So where the fence is for the ball field, there's a little area of open grass. It's going to go right there on a pad.
Okay, that might be some problems because there is flooding right in that area. I've seen it, every summer I walk down there, there's some kind of a stream going right there. So that might be problems if you put it there. But I have to say that is one large generator that you want to install. I thought I understood the fire chief saying that you've already signed a contract?
No, we have not signed the contract. The contract was sent out, I believe, today in the email. That was sent to us by MEMA. We've been awarded the actual grant. So, when the town manager, if it's approved tonight, the town manager will sign it. The actual contract will be signed once we find the generator, you know, get everything situated with that. But we haven't actually signed the contract.
Contract with the company supplying the generator, I meant.
So, no, we haven't signed, we haven't signed a contract with, we've looked at a generator, we haven't signed with anybody.
And I also understood the fire chief saying that we cannot put air conditioning in that building?
I believe he was speaking about the actual gymnasium area.
Right.
They had looked at, they couldn't put AC in that, but that's not, I don't know much about, you know, that part of it. That was with DPW. You would have to talk to him about that. I know they had discussed it and they had discussed it with the previous DPW director. But that wasn't, that didn't make it down to my level.
So the generator that you want to place there, that's for, if we have an emergency, power goes down in town, we can keep power on at the community center?
So that generator will actually run the entire building. Every single thing in that building will run off that generator.
All right, and the generator is $50,000 and the work to put it there is an additional $50,000?
So we're estimating between 30 and 50. We don't have any of the hard numbers yet because we're, the actual work's going to be done between the school department and the DPW. The school department is going to provide the electrical work for us. The DPW is going to do the groundwork for us, putting in the pad, running the conduit underneath to the building. So we're going to save quite a bit with doing that. But we don't have those hard numbers yet, but we're pretty certain it's going to be under that.
Okay, I guess that's it, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Very well, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Thank you, Fire Fighter Edwards.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen. Vote to accept the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Grant Award in the amount of $5,000, available under the fiscal year 2020 Burn JAG real- reallocating grant based on the Southbridge Police Department 2022 Address Verification Program and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Counselor Lazo.
The recommendation was unanimous for passage?
Any discussion? Very good, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Item number eighteen. Vote to ratify the standard contract between the town of Southbridge and Quinsigamian Community College for the amount of $50,000 for police details and coverage for our Southbridge site beginning July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023 and to authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Counselor Lazo.
The vote was that, subcommittee was unanimous?
Any discussion? Very good, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Item number nineteen. Amendments to Stoppage Bylaw by adding Section 9-203.1 Wetlands Protection and Conservation and vote to adopt said bylaw. Second reading.
Okay, 9-203.1, purpose. The purpose of this bylaw is to protect the floodplains, wetlands, and related water resources, riverfront areas and adjoining upland areas in the town of Southbridge by prior review and controlling activities deemed by the Southbridge Conservation Commission here and after the commission, likely to have a significant or cumulative effect on the wetlands resource area or resource area values, including, but not limited to, the following: public or private water supply, groundwater, water quality, flood control, sedimentation and erosion control, storm damage prevention and flowage, water pollution control, wildlife and wildlife habitats, fisheries, shell fisheries, rare plant and animal species, agriculture, aquaculture, and recreation values deemed important to the community. Collectively, the resource area value is protected by this bylaw. This bylaw is intended to utilize the home rule authority of the town of Southbridge so as to protect the resource areas under the Wetlands Protection Act, MGL Chapter 131, Section 40, here and after the act, as amended from time to time, to a greater degree to protect the, to protect the additional resource areas beyond the act recognized by the town as significant, to protect all resource areas for their additional values beyond those recognized in the act, and to impose, in local regulations and permits, additional standards and procedures stricter than those of the act and regulations thereon, 310 CMR 10, as amended from time to time. Subject, however, to the rights and benefits accorded to agricultural uses and structures of all kinds under the laws of the Commonwealth and other relevant bylaws of the town of Southbridge. Unless otherwise indicated in this bylaw and these regulations, definitions, timeframes, forms, and procedures shall be the same as those stated in the act. With required location, sorry, try that again. With required local commission identification, notification, and documentation, the commission and its agents, officers, and employees shall, with 24 hours' notice to the property owner, except in the event of an emergency, have authority to enter upon privately-owned land for the purpose of performing their duties under this bylaw and may make or cause to be made such examinations, surveys, or sampling as the commission deems necessary. Subject to the constitutions and laws of the United States and the Commonwealth, so long as property owner consents to the entry or an administrative search warrant is issued by a court. See Mass General Law, Chapter 131, Section 40, as amended. Section 9-203.2, jurisdiction. Except as permitted by the commission or as otherwise provided in this bylaw, no person shall commence to remove, fill, dredge, degrade, discharge, and to alter or build upon the following resource areas: fresh wa- try that again, freshwater wetlands, marshes, wet meadows, bogs, swamps, vernal pools, banks, reservoirs, lakes, ponds of any size, lands underwater bodies, land subject to flooding or inundation by groundwater or surface water, any land bordering thereon. Bordering in this context shall mean either the greater of the following: A, 100 feet horizontally perpendicular to the bank of any freshwater wetland, marsh, wet meadow, bog, swamp, vernal pool, inclusive of uncertified vernal pools, bank, reservoir, lake, and pond; B, 100 feet horizontally perpendicular to the water elevation of the 100-year storm; C, 200 feet horizontally perpendicular to the mean annual high-water elevation of any stream, perennial or intermittent, or river. In addition, it is the policy of the commission to advise applicants on these non-regulated wetland resource areas; D, intermittent streams upgrading of wetland resource areas; E, isolated land subject to flooding below 310 CMR 10.57 size thresholds; and F, isolated wetlands less than 5,000 square feet. The commission will make every effort to identify these areas at the site, will recommend locating them on the plans, will encourage applicants to avoid impacts to these areas, and will suggest possible measures to mitigate unavoidable impacts with respect to drainage and flood control. The jurisdiction of this bylaw shall not extend to uses and structures of agriculture that enjoy the rights and privileges of laws and regulations of the Commonwealth governing agriculture, including work performed for normal maintenance or improvement of land and in agricultural or aquacultural uses, as identified by 310 CMR 10.04. 9-203.2A, vernal pools. Vernal pools certified by the state shall be considered a resource area. It is the policy of the commission to protect vernal pools because they provide valuable and increasingly rare wildlife habitat. Because they do not contain water all seasons of the year, a vernal pool must be identified in order to be protected. This can be done at the responsibility of the property owner or developer as part of the determination of applicability or part of the notice of intent review or prior to these processes by a qualified person. The commission must be satisfied that the person identifying a vernal pool is qualified to do so. 9-203.2B, rare species. Where the project site warrants, the applicant may be required to submit a quantitative habitat analysis. In areas under the jurisdiction of the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program, the applicant must obtain a written decision from the National Heritage and Endangered Species Program indicating the presence or absence of protected or endangered species. 9-203.3, conditional exceptions. The order of conditions and application required by this bylaw shall not be required for maintaining, repairing, or replacing, but not substantially changing or enlarging, an existing and lawfully located structure or facility used in the service of the public or to provide electric, gas, water, sewer, telephone, and other telecommunications services, provided that written notice has been given to the commission prior to the commencement of any such work and provided that the work conforms to the performance standards and design specifications in regulations adopted by the commission. 9-203.3A, agricultural work. Any agricultural activity as defined by the Farm Assessment Act, MGL Chapter 61A, to be normal maintenance or improvement of land in agricultural use and therefore exempt from the provisions of this act, MGL Chapter 128, Section 1A, and from the Wetlands Protection Regulations of 310 CMR 10, will also be exempt under this bylaw. Additionally, any agricultural activity as defined by MGL Chapter 61A and on land not under this jurisdiction of the act and 310 CMR 10 will be exempt from all local jurisdiction. However, no animals shall be given free access to any wetland, vernal pool certified or not, isolated land subject to flooding, marsh, swab, swamp, bog, et cetera, intermittent or perennial stream, and they must be kept far enough away or below, far, sorry, far enough from or below the level of aforementioned wetlands so that their waste does not impact said wetlands. The application and order of conditions required by this bylaw shall not be required for work performed for normal maintenance or improvement of land. 9-203.3B, emergency work. The application and permit required by this bylaw shall not be required for emergency projects necessary for the protection of the health and safety of the public, provided that the work is to be performed by or has been ordered to be performed by an agency of the Commonwealth or a political subdivision thereof, provided that written advance notice has been that written advance notice has been given to the commission prior to commencement of work or within twenty-four hours after commencement, provided that the commission or its agent certifies the work as an emergency project, provided that the work is performed only for the time and place certified by the commission with limited purposes necessary to abate the emergency, and provided that within twenty-one days of commencement's commencement of emergency projects, a permit application shall be filed with the commission for review. Upon failure to meet these and other requirements of the commission, the commission may, after notice and public hearing, revoke or modify any emergency project approval and order restoration, uh, order restoration and mitigation matters. Nine dash two oh three point three C, waivers. Strict compliance with this bylaw may be waived when, in the judgment of the commission, such action is in the public interest and is consistent with the intent and purpose of the bylaw. Any request for a waiver must be certi- must be submitted to the commission in writing stating why a waiver is desired or needed, is in the public and public benefit, and is consistent with the intent and purpose of the Wetlands Protection Act and this bylaw. All waiver requests must be, shall be presented at the time of filing.
You all set?
Um, you want, if you want me to continue?
It's up to you.
I mean, it seems like a good place to break, so.
Okay. Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you.
Nine dash two oh three point.
Yeah. Nine oh dash two oh three point four filing requirements and procedures, nine oh, nine dash two oh three point four A permits. Written applications shall be filed with the Conservation Commission to perform activities affecting resource areas protected by this bylaw. The permit application shall include such information and plans as are deemed necessary by the commission to describe proposed, uh, activities and their effects on the resource area protected by this bylaw. No activities shall commence without receiving and complying with a permit issued pursuant to the bylaw except as certified to be an emergency under section nine dash two oh three point three B above. Nine dash two oh three point four B, determinations. Any person desiring to know whether or not a proposed activity or an area is subject to this bylaw may in writing request a determination from the commission on the appropriate form. The request shall contain all necessary information, plans, data calculations, et cetera, as specified by the regulations. The commission is in appropriate, is in appropriate case, the commission is, in an appropriate case, may accept as the application and plans under this bylaw any application and plans filed under the act in three ten, uh, CMR ten. But the commission is not obliged to do so. At the time of the permit application, the applicant shall pay a filing fee according to the schedule in the associated Southbridge Wetland Protection and Conservation Bylaw rules and regulations. This fee is not refundable, the fee is in addition to the, is in addition to the that require, to the that required by the act, three ten CMR ten. Nine dash two oh three point five, notice of hearings. The applicant filing a request for determination or application for permit under the provisions of this bylaw shall give written notice with proof of mailing or by hand delivery to all the abuders within one hundred feet of the property lines of the property in which the project is to occur according to the current assessor's records five days in advance of the scheduled hearing in accordance with provisions of this bylaw and its regulations. The commission is responsible for notifying the applicant and owner, if not the same, of the time, place, in place of the scheduled hearing. Also, the commission is responsible for placing a notification of the subject, of of the subject hearing in a local newspaper at least five days prior to the hearing. The commission shall conduct a public hearing within twenty-one days of the receipt of the completed application for permit or request for determination unless unusual circumstances prevent this scheduling. Under such circumstances, the hearing shall be scheduled at the next regularly scheduled commission meeting, having the time available. The commission may, at its option, combine the hearing under this bylaw and the hearing conducted under the act. The commission shall have the authority to continue the hearing to a specific date agreeable to the applicant, announced at the hearing without further notification for reasons stated at the hearing. Those reasons may include but are not limited to requests from other boards, officials, or attendees. In the event that the applicant applicant objects to a continuance, the hearing shall be closed and the commission will take action on available information. Nine dash two oh three point six, notification to other town officials, boards, and commissions. At the same time, it advertises the public hearing, the commission shall notify the Department of Public Works, Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, Board of Health, Building Inspector, and any other relevant municipal body regarding the application before the commission. The commission shall not take final action until such boards and officials have had seven days from receipt of the notice to file written comments and recommendations with the commission. The commission shall take into account any comments or recommendations, but they shall not be binding on the commission. The applicant shall have the right to receive any such comments and recommendations and to respond to them at the public hearing prior to final action. Nine dash two oh three point seven, public hearings, permits, and conditions. If the commission after a public hearing determines that the activities which are the subject of the application are likely to have a significant or cumulative impact uh, effect upon the wetland values protected by this bylaw, the commission within twenty-one days at the close of the hearing unless unusual circumstance per- circumstances prevent it shall issue or deny a permit for activities requested. Determinations of applicability will be issued within twenty-one days of receipt of the request. If the commission issues a permit, conditions shall be imposed which are deemed necessary to protect the interests and values, and all activities shall be performed in accordance with those conditions. The commission is empowered to deny a permit for failure to meet the requirements of this bylaw, for failure to submit necessary information and plans requested by the commission, for failure to avoid or prevent unacceptable significant or cumulative effects, to avoid or prevent unacceptable significant or cumulative effects upon the wetland values protected by this bylaw, and note, and where no conditions are accurate to tho- to protect those values. A permit shall expire three years from the date of issuance. The commission may issue a permit expiring five years from the date of issuance for reoccurring or continuance maintenance work, provided that annual notification of time and location of work is given to the commission. Any permit may be renewed once for an additional one-year period provided that the request for renewal is received in writing by the commission thirty days prior to expiration. The commission for good cause may revoke or modify a permit issued under this bylaw after a notice to the holder of the permit, notice to the public, abuders, and town boards pursuant to the preceding section nine dash two oh three point five in a public hearing. The Conservation Commission is in appropriate case, in an appropriate case, may combine the permit and other action on an application issued under this bylaw with the order of conditions issued under the act. The commission may deny the request for an extension and require the filing of a new permit request under the following circumstances: one, no work has begun on the project except where such failure is due to delays caused by events or processes outside the applicant's control that are clearly identified in the extension request; and two, new information has become available indicating that the order is not adequate to protect the interests covered by this bylaw. No work proposed in any permit application shall be undertaken until the permit issued by the co- uh, commission with respect to such work has been recorded in the Registry of Deeds, or if the land affected thereby be registered land in the registry section of the land court for the district wherein the land lies, and until the holder of the permit certifies in writing to the commission that the permit has been recorded.
All set?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Councilor McEddy?
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nine dash two oh three point eight, violations and enforcement. No person shall remove, fill, dredge, build upon, degrade, or otherwise alter protected resource areas or cause, suffer, or allow such activity, or leave in place unauthorized fill or otherwise fail to restore illegally altered land to its original condition, or fail to comply with a permit or an enforcement order issued. Nine dash two oh three point eight A, identification of violations. Violations can be identified by observations of the conservation commissions and commissioners and or its agents, wetland consultants, and citizens. Reports of violations are always confidential. Commissioners and staff may not reveal the source of any report of possible violations. When potential violations are reported, a commissioner, the commission's agent, or a wetland consultant will determine whether a violation exists and if an enforcement order is necessary. The wetland consultant may consult with commission's agent and commissioners as necessary, but if time or other constraints exist, may proceed employing best judgment. A temporary enforcement order or temporary cease and desist order may be imposed by an individual commission member, wetland consultant, or the commission's agent, but all such temporary orders must be ratified by a majority of the commission at a public meeting within twenty-one days, and may be extended at such time for any period the commission deems necessary. Nine dash two oh three point eight B, violations. If a commissioner, the commission's agent, or wetland consultant confirms or strongly suspects a violation, an enforcement order shall, will be issued. Enforcement orders will direct the property owners and contractors to one-stop work, two, identify resource areas on the site, three, install erosion and or sedimentation controls, and four, meet the commission to discuss the violation. Two, if a wetline, wetland line has been previously approved by the commission, its location will be basis for evaluation of the violation. If a wetland line has not been established or approved by the commission, then the commission or enforcement order may require the owner, developer, and contractor to employ a wetland scientist at the applicant's expense to identify wetland resource areas with flagging within a timeframe not longer than two weeks from the date of the enforcement order. All enforcement orders will be maintained in the conservation database and placed on file. At the subsequent meeting, the commission will consider the following aspect- aspects of the violation: A, value of the area to the statutory interests; B, harm or the damage; C, immediacy of the harm; D, value of restoration; E, feasibility of restoration; F, potential legal outcomes; G, potential financial burden to the town of Southbridge. Three, the commission shall have authority and force its regulations and permits by the issuance of enforcement orders, administrative orders, and initiation of civil and criminal court actions. Any person who violates the provision may be ordered to restore the property to its original condition and take other action deemed necessary to remedy such violations, fined, or both. The enforcement officer in the non-criminal disposition procedure shall be members of the Conservation Commission or its agents. Four, upon request of the commission, the town manager and the town attorney shall take legal action for enforcement under civil law. Upon request of the commission, the chief of of police shall take legal action for enforcement under criminal law. Five, municipal wards and officers, including any police officer or any or other police officer having police powers, shall have authority to assist the commission in enforcement. As an alternative to criminal prosecution in a specific case, the commission shall issue citations under the non-criminal disposition procedures set forth in Mass. General Law, chapter forty, section twenty-one D. And six, in addition to any other remedies available under any bylaw, under any law or this bylaw, any person who violates any provision of this bylaw, regulation, permit, or administrative order issued may be fined according to the fine scheduled below. A, the fine for filling in a wetland resource area is five dollar per square foot or filled-in resource area per day. Each day or portion thereof during such a violation can continues or unauthorized fill or other alter- alteration remains in place shall constitute a separate offense. Also, each provision of the bylaw, regulation, permits, or administrative orders violating shall, violated shall constitute a separate offense. For example, if unauthorized fill of a wetland amounts to one hundred square feet, the commission to it or its agents has the right to issue a penalty of five hundred dollars for each day unauthorized fill remains in the wetland or resource area. B, for all other violations, each day a portion thereof during which a violation continues shall constitute a separate offense, and each provision of the bylaw, regulations, permits, or administrative orders violated shall constitute a separate offense. Seven, pursuant to Mass. General Law, chapter forty, section twenty-one D, and the Town of Southbridge General Bylaw, section one dash one one one, the commission or its agent may issue the following penalties for wetland violations: in addition to the fine for filling of wetlands, after initial notification by the Southbridge Conservation Commission or its agents: A, first offense, one hundred dollars for each day the violation exists; B, second offense, five hundred and fifty dollars for each day the violation exists; C, third offense and all subsequent offenses, two hundred dollars for each day the violation exists. Fines assessed under this bylaw shall be separate from and in addition to any applicable under, under the act. Nine dash two oh three dash nine, construction standards and restrictions. Nine dash two oh three dash nine A, sequence of construction. The applicant shall provide a detailed sequence of construction to the commission as part of the standard filing requirements detailing in what order the project's construction will follow. Said sequence shall be followed by the applicant unless amended and approved by the commission. Nine dash two oh three point nine B, wetland setbacks for new activities. In order to protect and preserve the public interest and values of the wetlands and waterways of the town of Southbridge, activities and wetland in buffer zone resource areas should be avoided to the full extent practicable. The following are the minimum distance setbacks of activities from the edge of wetlands or vernal pool as per section nine dash two oh three point two A. These setbacks are the minimum and may be extended further if deemed necessary for the protection of the interests of the bylaw, of the bylaw by the commission. These setbacks may be reduced if the applicant successfully demonstrates to commit, to the commission that there are no adverse impacts along with a site inspection by the commission. The setbacks shall be as follows: A, zero-foot setback for wetland dependent structures, drain, outfalls, wears, et cetera. Fences and culverts or bridges necessary for wet upland access or reasonably alternative access is unavailable. B, twenty-five-foot setback for undisturbed natural vegetation. C, fifty-foot no-build setback to the edge of driveways, roadways, and structures. D, twenty-five-foot chemical-free area within two, which no fertilizers, herbicides, pesticides, or other chemical maintenance substances shall be used. E, one-hundred-foot setback for underground or above-ground storage of gasoline, oil, or other fuels and hazardous materials. F, one-hundred-foot setback of undisturbed natural vegetation to the mean high-water line for vernal pools, certified or not, where applicable. Somebody want to take over?
Sure. Councilor Montigny?
Okay. We're at nine two oh three point nine C?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Erosion prevention. Proposed location of all silt and erosion prevention devices such as silt fence, cure logs, and hay bale shall be shown on the plan submitted in the wetland filing furnished by the applicant for commission review and approval. These devices shall be installed prior to the commencement of activities on the site and maintained until landscaping is established and inspected by the commission or its agent. Nine dash two oh three point nine D, storage of fill. If any fill is to be stored on-site, it shall be stored outside of the buffer zone and covered by an impenetrable barrier, tarpaulin. The location of said fill shall appear on any plan submitted to the commission with the notice of intent. If the commission determines that the proposed location of fill threatens the area subject to protection, it may require the applicant to store said fill in a different location or to remove it completely from the site. Nine dash two oh three point nine E, construction debris or spoils area. There, there shall be no disposal or burial of construction debris, i.e., scrap lumber, metals, concrete, asphalt, piping, logs, stumps, et cetera, within one hundred feet of a wetland. Illegal disposal of said debris shall result in a stop-work order, fine, required, removed... Illegal disposal of said debris shall result in a stop-work order, fine, required removal of said debris, or all of the above. The commission may allow the creation of a spoils area which would be required to be designated on the project plan if it is proven that it will not harm areas subject to protection. This spoils area must be protected from the elements as if it were fill as above. Nine dash two oh three point nine F, wetlands replication and requirements. One, it is the policy of the commission to follow the no-net-loss guidelines set forth by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Therefore, applicants who propose to alter resource areas under the commission's jurisdiction must demonstrate that there is no practicable, practicable alternative, minimize impacts where they are unavoidable, and mitigate losses of wetland resource area where applicable or appropriate on a one-to-one-point-five basis. Limited projects are included in this requirement. The one-point-one-point-five ratio may be reduced to one-point-one if the applicant successfully demonstrates to the commission that the site will not support a one-point-to-one-point-five ratio due to the area of the site, slope, soil type, or other natural feature which would adversely affect the created wetland resource area. Projects involving wetlands filing and/or permanent alterations shall meet the requirements of three-ten CMR ten-point-sixty-three and ten-point-five-five-four and the following requirements of the commission. A, the proposed replication area design must be submitted to the commission for approval as part of the submittal of the project notice of intent. Applicants are advised to appear before commission for preliminary discussion, comments, and review prior to submittal of the replication plan with the notice of intent. B, the replication area must be shown to sufficiently duplicate the functions of the wetland proposed to be altered. C, the replication area shall be constructed to the extent possible immediately after alteration of the existing wetland and during the same growing season. D, the proposed replication area must be clearly flagged for commission site inspection before the notice of intent filing shall be considered complete, and said flagging shall correspond to flagging shown on the plans. E, the notice of intent submittal for a replication area shall include a detail of replication showing. I, cross-section with the indication of groundwater level, soil profile, and thickness of organic soil in the existing and proposed wetlands. II, plant species, uh, plant species detail, including species found in the area to be altered, and number, types and locations of species to be introduced into the replication area which shall be native wetland species. III, detail the stabilization plans for replication area banks, and IV, wildlife habitat diversity plan. F, construction of the replication area shall follow all requirements as set forth by the commission. Three, if any, if after three growing seasons, the commission determines that the replication area has not satisfactorily developed into a wetland, the applicant or owner may be required to submit new plans to successfully replace the wetland. No certificate of compliance shall be issued until the commission has determined that a satisfactory replication area has been completed at the end of the three-year period. Nine dash two oh three point ten, surety. As part of a permit issued under this bylaw, in addition to any surety required by any other municipal or state board, agency, or official, the commission may require that the performance and observance of the conditions imposed thereunder, including conditions requiring mitigation work, be secured wholly or in part by one or both of the methods described below. One, by a proper bond, deposit of money, or negotiable securities under a written third-party escrow arrangement, or other undertaking of financial responsibility sufficient in the opinion of the commission to be released in whole or in part upon issuance of certificate of compliance for work performed pursuant to the permit. Said bond or other surety shall be payable to the Town of Southbridge sufficient as to secure the faithful and satisfactory performance of work required by the final order of conditions in such sum and upon such conditions as the commission may require. Notwithstanding the above, the amount of such bond shall not exceed either the estimated cost of the work required by the final order of conditions or the estimated cost of the work required for the restoration of affected lands and properties if the work is not performed as required, whichever is greater, but may include a sum to account for reasonably projected inflation if the project will last more than one year, including replication time. Nine dash two oh three point eleven, appeals. A decision of the commission shall be reviewable in the Superior Court in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter two forty-three, Section four. Nine dash two oh three point twelve, relation to the Wetlands Protection Act. This bylaw is adopted under the Home Rule Amendment of the Massachusetts Constitution and the Home Rule statutes, independent of the Wetlands Protection Act, MGL, Chapter one thirty-one, Section forty, as amended, and Regulations three-ten CMR ten-point-zero-zero as amended thereunder. It is the intention of this bylaw that the purposes, jurisdiction, authority, exemptions, regulations, specifications, standards, and other requirements shall be interpreted and administered as stricter than those under the Wetlands Protection Act and Regulations. Nine dash two oh three point thirteen, severability. If any provision of this bylaw is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, such holding shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this bylaw, nor shall it invalidate any order of conditions or determination which previously has been issued. Nine dash two oh three point fourteen, regulations. After public notice and public hearing, the commission shall promulgate rules and regulations to effect the purposes of this bylaw. Failure by the commission to promulgate such rules and regulations or illegal declaration of the invalidity of such regulations by a court of law shall not act to suspend or invalidate the effect of this bylaw. Two, the Southbridge Conservation Commission may, from time to time, adopt such other and further definitions, regulations, fees, and performance standards as it may deem necessary to protect the interests and/or intent of this bylaw. Said definitions, regulations, fees, and performance standards shall become effective upon publication following a public hearing advertised as per state law. Three, at a minimum, these regulations shall define key terms in this bylaw and establish basic performance standards not inconsistent with the bylaw and procedures governing the amount in filing of fees. Nine dash two oh three fifteen, definitions. The following definitions shall apply in the interpretation and the implementation of this bylaw. Nine dash two oh three point fifteen A, alter shall include without limitation the following activities when undertaken to, upon, within, or affecting resource areas protected by this bylaw. One, removal, excavation, or dredging of soil, sand, gravel, or aggregate materials of any kind. Two, change of pre-existing drainage characteristics, flushing characteristics, salinity distribution, sedimentation patterns, flow patterns, or flood retention characteristics. Three, drainage or other disturbance of water level or water table. Four, dumping, discharging, or filing, filling with any material which may degrade water quality. Five, placing of fill or removal of material which would alter elevations. Six, driving of piles, erection or repair of buildings or structures of any kind. Seven, placing of extrusions on objects and water. Eight, destruction of plant life, including cutting of trees. Nine, changing temperature, biochemical oxygen demand, or other physical, biological, or chemical characteristics of any waters. Ten, any activities, changes, or work which may cause or tend to contribute to pollution of any body of water or groundwater. Eleven, incremental activities which have or may have a cumulative adverse impact on the resource areas protected by this bylaw. Nine dash two oh three fifteen B, abutter is a landowner as determined by the most recent assessor's records whose land immediately abuts the property which is the subject of notification, or whose land lies across a public or private traveled way, or across any river stream, pond, or lake, or downstream to a distance of one hundred feet. In particular cases, the Southbridge Conservation Commission can add persons to the list of abutters to be notified. Nine dash two oh three fifteen C, intermittent stream is a body of running water that does not flow year-round. It may flow in all seasons except during the driest summer months, or only after precipitation, or when groundwater levels or water from snow melt are high. There may be little or no vegetation on the rocks, and the only invertebrates that may be species that can tolerate periods of drought. An intermittent stream shall be delineated by a defined permanent channel and bank and the occurrence of two or more of the following characteristics. A, evidence of scour or deposits of recent alluvium or detritus. B, the presence of standing or flowing water for a duration longer than a particular storm incident. C, the presence of hydrophytic vegetation and/or D, the presence of hydric soils. Nine dash two oh three fifteen D, person shall include any individual, group of individuals, association, partnership, corporation, company, business organization, trust, estate, the Commonwealth, or political subdivision thereof, to the extent subject to town bylaws, administrative agency, public or quasi-public corporation or body, this municipality, and any other legal entity its legal representatives, agents, or assigns. Nine dash two oh three fifteen E, rare species shall include those invertebrate and invertebrate animal species officially listed, endangered, threatened, or of special concern by the Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife under three-two-one CMR eight as amended, as well as those plant species listed as rare, threatened, or endangered by the Massachusetts Natural Heritage Program regardless of whether the site in which they occur has been previously identified. Nine dash two oh three fifteen F, stream includes any body of running water moving in a channel in the ground, including intermittent streams, perennial streams, rivers, and headwaters of streams above the point where there are wetlands adjoining them. Nine two oh three point fifteen G, vernal pool is a confined basin depression which contains a small body of standing water usually drying out for part of the year during warm weather, as well as the area within a hundred feet of the mean annual boundary of such a depression to the extent that such habitat is within an area subject to protection under MGL, Chapter one thirty-one, Section forty, as specified in three-ten CMR ten-point-o-two I, as amended. It can be natural or man-made and usually lacks a permanent outlet or any fish population. Further, the occurrence of one or more obligate species, including the fairy shrimp, spotted salamander, Jefferson salamander, marbled salamander, wood frog, and/or eastern spade-footed toad, is necessary to conclusively define the vernal pool. These areas are essentially breeding habitat and provide other extremely important wildlife habitat functions during non-breeding season as well, for a variety of amphibian species such as wood frog and the spotted salamander, and are important habitat for other wildlife species. Nine dash two oh three fifteen H, wetlands under this bylaw includes wet meadows, marshes, bogs, and swamps of all kinds regardless of whether they border on surface waters as defined in MGL, Chapter one thirty-one, Section forty, as amended. Except as otherwise provided in this bylaw or in Regulations of the commission, the definitions and terms in this bylaw shall be set forth in the Wetlands Protection Act, MGL, Chapter one thirty-one, Section forty, and Regulations three-ten CMR ten.
Okay. We're all set. On behalf of Counselor Steve's, there's a couple of amendments that I'd like to submit for consideration at the third reading and beyond. Section nine dash two oh three point four, which is on page four, in the second paragraph, there are two words missing in the last sentence of that second paragraph. It says, "The fee is in addition to the," the word should be "fee" inserted there, "that" insert the word "is." So it should read, "The fee is in addition to the fee that is required by the Act," et cetera. Section nine dash two oh three point ten, which is on page nine, I'm at toward the bottom under surety, there's a number one, there needs to be a number two inserted, and that would be the following text. "By accepting a conservation restriction, easement, or other covenant enforceable in a court of law, executed and duly, duly recorded by the owner of record, running with the land to the benefit of the Town of Southbridge whereby the permit conditions shall be performed and observed before any lot may be conveyed other than by mortgage deed. This method shall be used only with the consent of the applicant." Then we move on to nine dash two oh three dot fourteen, Section two, which is on page ten. The word "regulations" needs to be inserted in the first sentence so that it reads, "The Southbridge Conservation Commission may, from time to time, adopt such other," insert the word "regulations," and further definitions. And then finally, nine dash two oh three point fifteen I, which is on the last page, page twelve, that would be a new insertion, nine dash two oh three point fifteen I, for the definition of wetlands consultant, meaning a person with experience and training in wetlands issues who is able to conduct, submit, and explain wetlands delineations, classifications, functional assessments, and mitigation plans. And I'll forward these to Mr. Rumsey so he can add these to the document, and we can have an updated document for the next meeting. Are there any concerns at this point with the second reading? Any counsels have concerns? Counselor McEddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any concerns about the reading. I have some concerns about the Conservation Commission. How many people do we have on the Conservation Commission?
So currently, there are three members of the Conservation Commission out of the potential seven with two alternates.
So basically, we can't, we don't even have a quorum of that committee. Is that correct?
With the way the Conservation Commission, with the way that their powers are designated by the state, they are allowed to operate with as few members as they have. So for example, the quorum consists of the majority of members who are on the commission currently. So currently, there's three, so quorum is two people. It does make for very difficult meetings.
Is one of those members you?
No, I am not a member of the Conservation Commission. I am merely their staff agent.
I mean, the last meeting I went to, there were two, two members and you. That's all that was there.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Ozawa?
I, I didn't know that there were only two or three, but I, constituting a quorum of a board that say is have a five, seven, I remember we had a thirteen, member counsel, and that was nine. The law, I thought, was pretty explicit on what a quorum was. By having, not having a committee fall, I really would check that more than what the Conservation says. Maybe like the Secretary of State's office would be more like the place to find the answer on that.
We have consulted the Secretary of State's office and the Mass. General Laws, and as it's written, the commission is allowed to operate with the number of members they have.
Wow.
It's a special power of Conservation Commissions. It's something that was discussed at length at the commission prior to the last member who would have made a quorum of seven, you know, it would have been the fourth member before he resigned from the commission.
Well, we're gonna have to get some people involved at that. I know we had a, a good push on a lot of the other boards and commissions. I mean, you know, we need some help down there.
I wholeheartedly agree.
Any other amendments, concerns? Very good. Let's move on to item number twenty, council's forum. Counselor McEddy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. A couple of weeks ago, we received an email from the town manager concerning increased electric rates from National Grid, and he talked about municipal aggregation options to give residents a better rate on their electric costs, and I thought that was a good idea. I'd like to know where that stands.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I did reach out to our contact at National Grid, had a conversation about that, as well as the consultant that we've used on energy, and I had a conversation with both of them. I'm waiting for some additional information from National Grid about it. They did say there are some pros and cons to it. Sometimes you could get locked into, just, just as advantageous it could be to get locked in at a low rate when things are going up, it could be a disadvantage to the community to get locked in at a high rate. But nevertheless, I am gathering information so that I can bring it back to the committee. Both of them were gonna get back to me with some information, so I did follow up on that. But there is a process that once we get it, we would have to undertake a vote and go out and do some work. And hopefully, when I get, you know, we can work on this with, when we get, I should have mentioned earlier, if you may, if I may, we're getting our IT person and our health director coming in next week. Hopefully, when we have some people in health inspections, I can enlist some additional help from these folks looking at some of these issues with me, including Ms. Smith.
All right. Thank you. I'd appreciate if you kept this updated on that one. I would also like it updated on several other ongoing issues that have come up this past year. I don't like to keep residents in the dark on this, on these issues. I'm not asking for answers tonight, but I would like, at some point, if the town manager, you know, at least addressed these issues. There was an issue with Dresser Hill Road water erosion problem, Hillside Drive water erosion, Prince Road, there was a resident who called me about an easement on a drain pipe. Gulfwood Road, Ellis Road drainage pond. These are, these are issues that residents have asked me about, and I would just like to be able to present them with something that it is being looked at, or not keeping them on the dark on these issues. There's also the dog park. I'd like to know what's the, if there's any info on where that stands. I know the recreation committee had formed a committee. Have they met? Have they decided anything on this? It's something that I would like to be updated on. And also then, the dog kennel, which is a never-ending engineering, it's in the never-ending engineering phase. I would like to know what's going on with that. I have received some, some comments from residents that they thought the DPW facility would be a good place for it. Wherever it ends up, I would like to see something going forward with that. And finally, and thank you for updating us on the- And finally, and thank you for updating us on the carpet, but I will point out that today is day two hundred and seventeen, since the council voted to replace the carpets in the town hall. And as I walked in this, this afternoon to the town hall, I could see that the carpets have still not been replaced. That's all I have tonight, thank you.
Very good. Counselor Montigny.
Thank you. I wanted to say, I forgot to mention about the hazardous waste day on the twenty-fourth of September. I took part in that and the electronics day the following Saturday at the DPW, and I have to say it was like one of the smoothest processes I've ever been through. I was in and out of the dump in like less than three minutes, I think, honestly. So I never took part in one before. I had to give kudos to everyone who worked on those things. I'd be remiss if I don't mention my godson's family, very important to me, the matriarch of that family, the patrona, abuela, it's her birthday, Flavia Vélez, this week, she's turning eighty, very big monumental thing for our family there, so bendición, and I love you. And now I have to say, I wasn't going to mention anything else but this discussion about counselors having to pay for something, I just wanted to recite a couple small pieces of the charter. Four-two-one says, "The town manager shall be the chief administrative officer of the town, shall be directly responsible and accountable to the town council for the effective administration of all town affairs. Placed in his or her charge by the council or by this charter, the manager shall serve as a resource to the council." Two-four-one says, "Except as otherwise provided in this charter, all general, corporate, legislative, policymaking, and appropriation powers of the town shall be vested in the town council." So two-three-two says, "Town councilors shall be reimbursed for actual expenses incurred in the performance of their official duties from an annual appropriation for such purpose," to what the previous speaker said earlier tonight. He's not looking for a public records request, he's looking to perform his official duties as a town counselor. So you want to do a runaround of make someone pay twenty bucks just so I go and expense it back out and you give it right back to me, it's what it says right here in two-three-two in the charter. We're just trying to do our job, which is, again, a non-paying job, and we're just trying to do it well, not trying to bog down any departments by asking them for a bunch of useless information. We're just trying to hold up the charter that the voters of this town, the citizens of this town, created for us to follow. So please, no more discussion about making us pay for things that we need to do our duties as stated in the charter. Thank you very much.
Counselor Lozo.
I just got one thing. I attended a golf tournament for Marcos Rios, which was a friend of mine, and I'm very close with the family. The golf tournament was almost a Southbridge Pride Day. I've never seen a golf tournament, and I've, I golf in the police, the fire, Lions Club, and all kind of memorial golf tournaments, fundraisers. Never have I seen the Southbridge Pride so proud than at that golf course. First of all, the golf course, it was over two hundred people, they were serving outside, they were serving inside, they were running out of space, that's how well-attended it was. Normally, if you're on a golf tournament, they usually have a sign here or there. They had ten signs on every hole, twenty-five signs on the putting, all donated by generous citizens and friends of the family. Then you had your bronze and your corporate, you could not believe the money that people came out and, and supported this cause. And then, in the final drawings that, of all the good things that were donated for the drawings, everybody was donating everything back. They would win two hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, donate it back, donate it back. The Southbridge contingency was overwhelmingly generous, but in the closing moments, when Sebarina Rios said, "The money that is being raised here is going to stay in Southbridge, in scholarships, in projects." I sat there, and I was in awe. I bet to so many things, and, you know, everybody underestimates the generosity of town of Southbridge, but this family, in, in the great loss that they had of Marcos, it was such a positive and enjoyable pride moment for the town that if Marcos was looking down, he would be proud of his family and proud of his community. It was an outstanding showing. I've never seen anyone like that, or any showing, for any type of fundraiser like this. But I'd just like to mention it, the Marcos family, Marcos's family, Rios's family, is a great asset to this town, we knew that long before this function, but this function emphasized the value of that family, the loss of, of such a valuable person, and most of all, how Southbridge is, is, is like glued together with so many different aspects and different facets that were, and different people and groups that were at this function was absolutely impressive, and I was just darn proud to be from Southbridge. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Rivas.
Thank you. I do, I was also at, at the golf tournament, and I echo Counselor Lozo's sentiments about the generosity of the community and really, you know, kind of honoring Marcos's memory and, you know, and the Rios family, who were very near and dear to many of us. You know, Mrs. Rios is a role model to me and was a leader in our community from the very beginning, and so I was, you know, honored to be part of that event as well. I wanted to also mention and kind of, you know, give, you know, residents in our community, you know, thinking about them and their families, whether they are in Florida or in Puerto Rico, who are, you know, suffering through these, these climate emergencies, and we are thinking of you and hope your families and your friends are, are safe, you know, from all of the damage that was caused by these events. To that extent, this Thursday on October sixth, the Latino, Latin American Business Organization is gonna have a fundraising event at Nuestra Restaurant on fifty-five Pearl Street in Worcester, to benefit the families affected in Puerto Rico from Hurricane Fiona. That event will be from six to, from eight to ten PM, and all of the donations will go to the families that have been affected, so that will be this Thursday, October sixth. I wanted to just bring some attention, there's, there's always such great work that happens in our community by a lot of different people, and I recently attended the Community Connections and Recreation Department's Health Fair on Henry Street Field, that about a hundred and twenty residents from that neighborhood attended. And I just want to say that it is an area of our community that doesn't get a lot of attention, and the residents that came to that event were so appreciative that these services were being provided and that attention was being brought to their neighborhood, and the faces of the kids getting pizza and, you know, participating in activities and getting information, health, you know, critical health information, and a lot of service information for our community. I look forward to partnering with the Recreation Director as part of the Southbridge Community Connections Steering Committee in the future to bring more events to that area of town. I'd also like to thank Chief Woodson for bringing back the crime watches in our community. I attended one at sixty Charlton Street on September thirteenth with him. I will also be at the next one on October twentieth, which will be held at the Wells Apartments, and I believe Counselor Adams will be attending that crime watch as well. It's really important for us to hear the concerns of our residents, and these are forums and opportunities for us to, to talk to residents directly. So I do bring some community information to those forums so that I can share information, but also learn from residents. I also wanted to mention, I know that our town manager mentioned the Bridgeford Grand Opening, which I was sad to miss today, but I want to thank Jacenia and Carla for really sticking to it and really not giving up on seeing a need that, that our community had, and, you know, working hard and, you know, sometimes putting in their own money from, out of their own pockets to make this, you know, service, this program come to life for our residents. And I have to say, thank you to RMG, who really supported their efforts and came together to, to bring these services to our community that are very much needed, so, you know, they don't get enough credit. I think a lot of times when our community comes together, you know, we can work together and bring these things to fruition. I also wanted to just briefly mention, on Saturday, I, I was part of the volunteers for the Oxtrot five K that the PTSA at Ulster Bridge Academy put together to raise funds for programs that service students at Ulster Bridge Academy, which we, you know, have fifty percent of the students there are from Southbridge, and our families benefit from those funds with different programs and different initiatives that are provided to our students through these, you know, through these funds that are raised. And last, lastly, I want to talk about the Southbridge Business Partnership Meeting on Wednesday at the Southbridge Airport. Once again, we had a, a presentation from Ron, the, the manager there, and he talked about the flight school and all of the things that are happening. I look forward to seeing families enjoying the, the airport diner again, and that area really coming back to life, and it's thanks to all of their efforts there, but it was great to hear about so many initiatives and, and things that are coming up in the future. So that was all, thank you.
Very good. Counselor Ryan.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Dow.
Nothing. Good night, thank you.
Very good. Item number twenty-one, discussion of the next meeting date. Next meeting is Monday, October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, at seven PM. Item number twenty-two, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of all president, we are adjourned.